Start it. The members will take their seats. Okay, thank you. To give our invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes Reverend Naomi Washington Lipart, Director of for Faith-Based and Interfaith Affairs for the City of Philadelphia. She is here today as the guest of Councilwoman Gimm. I would ask all members, guests, and visitors to please rise.
Let us pause now for a moment of grounding and connection, and I invite you to share in this moment in any way that aligns with your own tradition or consciousness. Oh God of many names, we lift up the City of Philadelphia to you this morning. You know every intersection by name. You dwell in every neighborhood, and you are present even in those places where we feel like we have to squint to see you. Help us to feel holy energy around us everywhere. As our children go to and from school all over the city, some excited to be there, some itching to escape, we pray for them, that they are inspired, that they can feel a sense of belonging. Give our children the endurance they need for the journey. And as our teenagers take selfies and filter them to look perfect, we pray for them. We pray that they know that they are already perfect to the one who created them. Help us to remind them that even as they are becoming what they will be, they are already precious to us. Give them the endurance they need for the journey. Our families need a holy touch, God. Every household, every bloodline, every parent, every elder, every aunt, every uncle, every cousin, those who are connected not by lineage but by love. Help us to find joy in each other. Give us the endurance we need for the journey. I pray this morning for all of our citizens who might be feeling tired, or angry, or full of despair. I pray for those who feel the pain and discomfort of illness or heartache. I pray for those who feel their lives are moving too fast or too slow. I pray for those who need deposits in their hearts, and in their bank accounts, and in their communities. And I pray especially this morning for this body assembled before me, our city's leadership, as they give their time and energy and brilliance to this task of governance. Our city council members need a holy touch. Our mayor needs a holy touch. So grant them the wisdom to make sense of conflicting issues, competing interests. Make them hungry and thirsty for justice. Give them the courage they need to be bold in their commitment to meeting the needs of the people of Philadelphia. Remind them that people are your priority, not profits, not property, not popularity. Where they need to find joy again in their work, give them joy. Where they need to find hope again in their work, give them hope. Where they need to find rest so they can continue in this work, give them rest. Where they need to find connection in the midst of isolation, deepen their relationships. In the places where they need to build bridges, give them tools. In the places where they need to tear down walls, give them tools. Where they need solutions, give them imagination. Where they need to be nudged, nudge them. Where they need to be agitated, agitate them. Give them the endurance they need to complete the tasks ahead of them, not just this morning, but every morning. Source of life, you know what touch each of us needs, so grant us with that touch. We need your divine interruption to be whole and to make all of Philadelphia whole. This is our prayer. In the name of all that is good and just and holy, may it be so. Amen.
Thank you so much Reverend. Genuinely appreciate you being here. Thank you. Councilor Bitties. Thank you, and Reverend, thank you again for those inspiring words. We really appreciate it. Our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, October 10th, 2019, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, October 10th, 2019 be approved.
Thank you. It has been moved and probably second that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, October 10th, 2019 stand approved. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and our journal is approved. Our next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, there are no requests of leave of absence today.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. Chair now recognizes Councilman O for request for leave of absence for members of the minority.
Thank you very much, Council President. On behalf of the minority, there are no requests for leave of absence.
Thank you very much, Councilman. So I'd like to thank everyone for coming down today, taking time out of your busy day to witness your government in action. We genuinely appreciate you being here. We look forward to your next visit here. So again, enjoy your stay here today, and thank you. This time, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell, who presented a resolution recognizing Kulu Melee Day. I hope I said that right. With Dorothy and John Wilkie, and those accompanying them, join the Councilwoman at the podium. And joining Councilwoman Blackwell, we have Councilman Greenlee, Councilwoman Gimm, Councilman Don, Councilwoman Blana Reynolds Brown.
Good morning, and thank you. Resolution hereby proclaiming October 18th, 2019 as Kulu Melee Day in Philadelphia in honor of the nation's first African dance and drum ensemble on its 50th anniversary. Whereas on September 4th, 2019, Kulu Melee African Dance and Drum Ensemble celebrated its 50th anniversary. The celebration of this historic event continues with the world premiere of their new spellbinding production, Ogun and the People, on Saturday, November 30th, at Annenberg Center for the Performing Arts, and the launch reception of its new commemorative book, Kulu Melee's Ogun and the People, celebrating 50 years on Friday, October 18th, at the African-American Museum of Philadelphia, and?
Whereas Kulu Melee was founded in 1969 by legendary drummer Baba Robert E.B. Coonley Crowder. The dynamic ensemble is the oldest continually performing African dance and drum ensemble in the nation. And whereas under Crowder's expert tutelage, the ensemble continued the traditions of iconic dancer-choreographers Pearl Primus and Catherine Dunham by performing authentic dances of Africa and its diaspora, and became a major part of the foundation of Philadelphia's black arts movement of the 1960s and 1970s. Kulu Melee helped give birth to a cultural renaissance in Philadelphia's African-American communities, and attracted those who were eager to study and experience African culture through the performing arts. Scores of dancers and drummers were trained by Crowder through Kulu Melee at his longtime headquarters in West Philadelphia's Lee Cultural Center, and?
Whereas Kulu Melee has been the crucial training ground for African dance, drum, and culture throughout the Philadelphia region. Over 77 dancers and musicians have participated in Kulu Melee through the years. The Philadelphia-based ensemble is dedicated to serving the community by presenting and preserving the culture, dance, and music of Africa and its diaspora. And whereas Kulu Melee draws on the music and movement of Brazil, Haiti, Cuba, Nigeria, Ghana, and Senegambia. Region, as well as African-American art folks for like hip-hop, bop, cha-cha, and the slope. The assemble is the first performance on the main stage upon this sacred procession returned from the river of Philadelphia's annual Undunde Festival since the beginning in 1975, and?
I'm incredibly honored to celebrate this 50th anniversary. Mama Dadi and family, you are family as much as anything else, and thank you for helping build an extraordinary organization and institution, and uplifting the importance of art as not only an extraordinary cultural form, but as a transfer of knowledge and language, culture, history, and pride to people. So whereas in the 1990s, Dorothy Mama Dadi Wilkie became artistic director and started incorporating West African dance into the choreography. She and her husband, John Wilk Wilkie, the group's music director, both joined Kulu Melee in 1971 as dancers and drummers. In 2007, she was awarded the prestigious Pugh Fellowship in the Arts for Dance Choreography. John was among the elder African drummers honored at Skin on Skins, where it all began, at Philadelphia's historic Church of the Advocate in 2011. The husband-and-wife team was celebrated for their outstanding contributions to the cultural arts by the Philadelphia Folklore Project in 2015. And whereas the Wilkies continue to follow in Baba Crowder's footsteps in advancing African culture by training dancers and drummers through Kulu Melee, so the culture will be preserved for future generations.
As someone who's seen this company a number of times, it is indeed a cultural experience. Seize the opportunity and see them at the Annenberg. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Philadelphia hereby proclaims October 18th, 2019 as Kulu Melee Day in Philadelphia. We honor, they honor the nation's first, first African-American dance and drum ensemble on the occasion of its 50th anniversary. Further resolve that an engrossed copy of this resolution will be presented to the leadership of Kulu Melee African Dance and Drum Ensemble as a sincere expression of the Council of the City of Philadelphia. We offer our gratitude, our admiration, our recognition, and your willingness to train young people. They have young people in this ensemble who are as young as four and five years old. Congratulations.
And the Chair recognizes Dorothy and John Wilkie for remarks.
I just want to thank the Council and Ms. Janine Blackwell for this resolution. I know that Baba Robert Crowder is smiling down on us for what we're doing now and where we are today. I know that Kulu Melee is the heaviest force here in Philadelphia for black arts movement. Thank you.
Councilor Bitties. Thank you. This time, excuse me, the Chair recognizes Councilman Don, who presented a resolution to Curtis Institute of Music. With Patricia Johnson and those accompanying her, please join the Councilman at the podium. And joining Councilman Don, we have Councilman O, Councilman Heenan, Councilwoman Blackwell, and Councilwoman Parker, and Councilman Taubmanberger. And Councilwoman Gimm. And Councilman Johnson. And Councilman Squilla, and Councilman O'Neil.
Yes, sir. Recognizing the 95th anniversary of the Curtis Institute of Music, it's important training the world's finest musicians, and you're going to hear about that, and it's for its contributions to the rich cultural fabric of the City of Philadelphia. I'll just take a moment to mention that one of my favorite parts of the Curtis School of Music is from the movie Trading Places. I love that movie. And that was filmed in the Curtis School of Music. So, Councilman?
Thank you. And whereas, for the last 95 years, the Curtis Institute of Music has been an institution in musical education based in Philadelphia. Curtis was founded in 1924 by Mary Louise Curtis Bach.
Mrs. Bach was the only child of Philadelphia-based Louisa Knapp and Cyrus H.K. Curtis. Her father's company, Curtis Publishing Company, produced two of the most popular magazines in America, The Saturday Evening Post and The Ladies' Home Journal.
Whereas Curtis's rare tuition-free policy was established in 1928, and to this day provides merit-based, full-tuition scholarships for all Curtis students. Students continue to be accepted for study at Curtis solely on the basis of their artistic talent and promise.
Whereas Mrs. Bach assembled a faculty that would attract the most promising students, and developed a philosophy ensuring that these exceptionally gifted young musicians would receive training to prepare them for careers as performing artists on the highest professional level. Curtis continues this history of excellence today.
Whereas Curtis alumni have gone on to make history as soloists, composers, conductors, orchestral players, and chamber musicians, Curtis graduates have received Pulitzer Prizes, Guggenheim Fellowships, and Avery Fisher Awards, and are in the front rank of soloists and conductors.
Whereas Curtis graduates are members of the world's leading orchestras, including principals in every major American orchestra. They have sung with La Scala, Covent Garden, the Vienna Schott's Opel, and the San Francisco Opera, among others. More than 60 have sung at the Metropolitan Opera.
Whereas Curtis provides a unique musical education for its students. The student body remains around 175 musicians, and the school maintains an elite 4% acceptance rate. Each student receives instruction from the faculty of performer, practitioners, and world-renowned visiting artists, and?
Whereas, with esteemed graduates leading and performing the most prestigious musical bodies across the globe, the power of the Curtis's legacy far surpasses its size. The Curtis campus reflects the rich heritage of the institution and the many musicians who have trained here, and?
Whereas in addition to prominent solo careers, many Curtis alumni have gone on to positions in major orchestras, opera companies, chamber ensembles, hold teaching positions at renowned educational institutions, work with important community outreach organizations, and more. And whereas in celebration of the 95th anniversary, the Curtis Institute is coordinating Philadelphia Music Week 2019 from October 15th through October the 21st.
And whereas Philadelphia Music Week is a celebration of our city's vibrant music community, coordinated by the Curtis Institute of Music, the Greater Philadelphia Cultural Alliance, and R E C, Rec Philly, the week's events include public performances and educational opportunities presented by Philadelphia-area music organizations, venues, and artists.
Now therefore be it resolved by this Council of the City of Philadelphia recognizes the 95th anniversary of the Curtis Institute of Music and Philadelphia Music Week 2019. Congratulations to the leadership.
And the Chair recognizes Ms. Johnson for remarks.
Good morning. My name is Christopher Mossy. I'm a vice president for advancement at the Curtis Institute. I'm here with my colleague Patricia Johnson. On behalf of Roberto Diaz, the president and CEO of Curtis, and the entire Curtis community, I thank the Council and everyone here for this proclamation. In addition to everything that was already written in the proclamation, I would like to add that Curtis strives to give as much back to the Philadelphia community as it gets. We present over 200 performances in Philadelphia, most of them free to the public. We have ongoing relationships with public schools, health and social organizations, and our alumni have gone on to found very important and impactful new organizations in Philadelphia. We are always striving to get better, and in our education, and our operations, and our relationship with the community. And we invite this Council, and we invite everybody here in this room, to visit Curtis, come to our concerts, and give us feedback on how we can become better all the time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor Bitties. Again, congratulations, and thank you very much. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilman Jones, who presented a resolution recognizing Janine Helms. With Ms. Helms, and those accompanying her, please join the Councilman at the podium. And joining Councilman Jones, we have Councilman Greenlee, Councilwoman Gimm, Parker, Councilman Don, Councilwoman Blana Reynolds Brown. And Councilwoman Keona Sanchez.
So if you look at the face of Ms. Helms today, she looks a little bit surprised because she had no idea that we were going to honor her this morning. She came to my office, and the recreation department staff had her in my office under false pretenses. Matter of fact, come on up here. Come on. I have a chairwoman of Recreation Committee needs to come up with us. So, fear is a primal instinct. It goes back to the caveman days of fight or flight. You were either going to rise up against whatever fear you have, or you're going to run from that fear. And that is a human emotion. But at times, you really get the measure of a person. At the time, and if anybody tells you they've never been afraid, that's not true. It's not, just not true. It's what you do after your fear takes hold of you that defines that person. Further definition comes when you conquer your own fear, and then supersede the need to help others over that fear. The Recreation Department, along with Ms. Helms, demonstrated that at Baker Playground Department, along with Ms. Helms, demonstrated that at Baker Playground on a Saturday after a basketball tournament, when one thing led to another, words were exchanged, and gunshots ensued. Eight people... Come here, Council, Chairwoman. Eight people were shot. Thank God, none of them died. None of them died. But what happened with the Recreation Department and their staff, their training, their heart kicked in, and they went to help others, mothers, fathers, and children, to make sure everyone was safe. Because no one knows what's going on right at that moment. When fear kicks in, you can't really determine where the danger is coming from. You can only research your soul to find out which direction you're going to go in. So, we wanted, after the dust was settled, after the cameras were gone, after the bullet wounds healed, acknowledge the Rec Department. And the reason why I also asked my Chairwoman of Recreation to come up, she talked about a long time ago getting cameras for all of our Rec Centers, and I'm thankful of that, and we are trying to follow that through. But we are grateful for the Recreation Department's commitment to our children, commitment to our spaces where our children play. And so therefore, we're going to honor them and particular staff today.
Recognizing and honoring Department of Parks and Rec employee, I'm sure volunteer, maintenance person, caretaker, program person, driver, all of the wonderful things that Janine Helms, for her heroic actions during the mass shooting at Baker Playground on July 13, 2019. Whereas Janine Helms is a native of Philadelphia, being born in North Philadelphia, raised in West Philadelphia, she is one of six children growing up in a single-parent home, something she attributes to her desire to work hard despite many obstacles and circumstances that may come her way, and...
Whereas, Ms. Helms graduated from William Penn High School. She went on to attend Shippensburg University and Community College of Philadelphia, where she majored in accounting. Her ultimate career goal is to become an accountant, and...
Whereas currently, Helms is a dedicated seasonal employee of the City of Philadelphia's Department of Parks and Recreation. Helms has been employed by the Department since June of 2015 and works as a pool maintenance attendant, and...
Whereas on July 13, 2019, Janine Helms was ending her shift at Baker Playground in the Overbrook section of Philadelphia when a shootout occurred during a community cookout and basketball tournament. Seven people were injured in the shooting, and...
Whereas, with great courage and bravery, Helms rushed to the aid of children and others at the playground at the time of the shooting, making sure that everyone remained safe until help arrived. Helms never hesitated about reporting to work the very next day, just hours after the shooting, and...
And whereas, this young lady, Janine Helms, demonstrated what it means to be a true, caring, attentive member of her community, and her heroic actions on the night of July 13 have earned the gratitude and admiration of all Philadelphians. Now therefore...
Resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia that it hereby recognizes and honors Department of Parks and Recreation employee Janine Helms for her heroic actions during the mass shooting at Baker Playground on July 13, 2019, further resolved and an engrossed copy of this resolution be presented to Janine Helms as evidence of the sincere admiration and respect of this legislative body. Janine, you make us proud as a city. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Chair recognizes Ms. Helms for remarks.
This is a shock for me, so, but I am thankful to be honored for the work that I do for my city. And I hope that if any other situations do occur, even though I don't want them to, that there is always somebody there who can step up and look out for their community.
Council of B Ds. Thank you, and congratulations, and thank you for your service. Our next order of business is communications. And the Chair requested the Sergeant of Arms delivers the messages from the Mayor to the Chief Clerk. Mr. Decker, please read those messages.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, pursuant to Sections 4604 and 2307 of the Homero Charter, I am today transmitting to the Council the recommendation of the City Planning Commission on the following bills. Bill numbers 190511, 190551, 190552, 190556, 190560, 190506, 190601, 190611, 190612, 190613, 190655, 190707, and 190712. And I am pleased to advise you that on October 16, 2019, I signed the following bills which were passed by Council at its session on October 3, 2019. Bill numbers 190558, 190559, and 190651. And I am submitting herewith for the consideration of your honorable body. And ordinance amending Chapter 9600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Service and Other Businesses to add a new Section 9638 entitled Sale of Electronic Smoking Devices in Youth Accessible Establishments, prohibiting selling and offering for sale certain electronic smoking devices in youth accessible establishments, and fixing penalties, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. You have any additional communications?
I have none, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Mr. Decker, our next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions. And the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning. I offer two resolutions, and I'd like to be permitted to speak briefly after the introduction.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A privilege resolution celebrating October as National High School Dropout Prevention Month, and recognizing the launch of Project U-Turn's social media campaign.
On this one or the next one? I'll just read them both. Mr. Decker.
And a privilege resolution recognizing Donovan Sterling West on the occasion of his appointment as President of the African-American Chamber of Commerce of Pennsylvania, New Jersey, and Delaware.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's important to always salute and acknowledge leadership in the business of leveling the playing field when it comes to MBE, WBEs. And so I would like to ask Donovan Sterling West to please stand so that we know who you are and put your name with the face, the new President of the African-American Chamber of Commerce. Raise your hand.
Thank you.
Secondly, and lastly, I'm pleased to introduce a resolution on the National Dropout Prevention Month and to recognize the partners who are in the business of making sure disconnected youth find pathways to college and careers. We want to say thank you to Malcolm Michael Galvin and Roxy Barnby from the Philadelphia Youth Network, Dawn Lynn Kaser from the School District of Philadelphia, please stand, Dr. David E. Thomas from CCP, and Andy Moran from Congresso. As well, we wanted to say we had the pleasure of having Rashay Walton, one of the youth ambassadors in our chambers today. And lastly, I'd like to salute another one of my former staffers, firecracker, Kellen White, and his students from Fry Charter School. We're hoping that you have an informative and worthwhile experience watching leadership in action here in the Philadelphia City Council. With all those young people accompanying Kellen White, please stand, and let's salute tomorrow's leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Those will be on today's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I introduce three bills and one non-privilege resolution.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
An ordinance authorizing the University of the Sciences in Philadelphia to own and maintain existing pedestrian-scale streetlights at 4514 through 22 Woodland Avenue, and an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Mount Vernon Street and North 32nd Street, North 42nd Street, and Bering Street, and an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Salford Street and Chestnut Street, Ludlow Street and South 51st Street, Chestnut Street and South 61st Street, Sansom Street and South 51st Street, Irving Street and South 52nd Street.
Those three bills will be referred to committee.
And a non-privilege resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration D's convey conditional fees in full title to certain city-owned lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on situated in the 44th Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
Next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Together with the administration, I offer one bill which is also cosponsored by yourself, Councilwoman Bass, and Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance amending Chapter 9600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Service and Other Businesses to add a new Section 9638 entitled Sale of Electronic Smoking Devices in Youth Accessible Establishments, prohibiting selling and offering for sale certain electronic smoking devices in youth accessible establishments, and fixing penalties.
Refer to the appropriate committee. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. One resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privilege resolution recognizing and honoring Department of Parks and Recreation employee Janine Helms for her heroic actions during the mass shooting at Baker Playground on July 13, 2019.
Today's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Fiona Sanchez.
Thank you, Council President. I have two bills and one resolution on behalf of the women of council, in particular, Councilwoman Blondo Reynolds Brown and all members of council.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
An ordinance amending Chapter 122700 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Permit Parking Districts by establishment of District 39. And an ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on the 1500 block of East Wingahocking Street, 1600 block of East Wingahocking Street, 1500 block of East Bristol Street, 1500 block of East Coyoga Street, and 4300 block of O Street, 4300 block of Castor Avenue on both sides of the street.
Those two bills are referred to committee.
And a privilege resolution recognizing the extraordinary contributions of the Independence Blue Cross Foundation and its president, Lorena Marshall Blake.
Today's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two resolutions, one privileged, one non-privileged. And I'd like to be heard on the non-privileged, please.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privilege resolution recognizing the American Jewish Committee's hashtag "Show Up For Shabbat" movement in remembrance of the first anniversary of the massacre at the Tree of Life Synagogue in Pittsburgh, and calling on all Philadelphians to raise their voices for a world free of antisemitism, bigotry, and hate.
And that will be on today's calendar.
And a non-privilege resolution calling on the Controller of the City of Philadelphia to investigate and audit the One Philly system in light of ongoing problems and inefficiencies which are comprising the city's basic functions, compromising the city's basic functions and public trust.
Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Thank you, Council President. Today I'm introducing a resolution cosponsored by Councilmembers Heenan, Jones, Taubner, O'Neal, O, Green, Johnson, and Squilla, calling on the City Controller's Office to investigate and audit the $50 million One Philly HR system. One Philly is an internal system that is supposed to administer payroll, human resources, and pensions for the more than 25,000 city employees. It has encountered some serious errors and issues since its implementation. In addition to being almost four years behind its initial launch date of December 2015, recent reports have indicated that thousands of employees were overpaid, and the city remains unaware of how much money was lost. There are also many employees that were underpaid. The list of issues surrounding our new payroll and human resources system are becoming extensive. Most recently reported by the Philadelphia Inquirer indicated that thousands of employees were underpaid and overpaid, and the city remains unaware of how much money was lost. Litigation from city employee unions, increases in overtime due to miscalculations for thousands of employees who earn time and a half, and inaccurate sick time and vacation time, leaving employees tasked with tracking their own time. This resolution ensures that a full investigation and audit of One Philly will be a priority of the City Controller's Office due to the severity of the issues being reported. It's completely unacceptable for the city to issue incorrect payroll checks weekly, which erodes the public trust and the trust of its employees. Filthy government for too long has been spending millions of dollars on ineffective IT systems, and we need to fix it now. Our taxpayers deserve answers, and we are long overdue for an effective solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. That will be on next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gem.
Good morning, Council President. I have no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Taubner.
Thank you, Council President. I have four bills today, and I would like to be heard after the title is read, one each.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance amending Chapter 191300 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Real Estate Taxes by providing for a tax credit against real estate taxes for grandparents serving as the primary caretaker for their grandchildren. And an ordinance amending Chapter 191500 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Wage and Net Profits Tax by adding a new definition to Section 191501, and adding a new Section 191507 entitled Working Grandparent Tax Credit. And an ordinance amending Chapter 191300 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Real Estate Taxes by providing for a tax credit against real estate taxes for parents serving as the primary caretaker for their children. And an ordinance amending Chapter 191500 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Wage and Net Profits Tax by adding a new definition to Section 191501, and adding a new Section 191507 entitled Working Parent Tax Credit, all under certain terms and conditions.
Chair recognizes Councilman Taubner.
Thank you, Council President. We live in economically challenging times. By and large, wages have not kept pace with inflation, leaving many Philadelphians, especially those with children at home, struggling to make ends meet. Today I'm introducing ordinances that are intended to give Philadelphians with children a meaningful tax break on their real estate taxes. The first ordinance I am introducing titled Grandparents' Childcare Tax Credit is specifically intended to give grandparents who are serving as the primary caretakers for their biological or legal grandchildren a much-needed annual tax break. I hear from our city's senior citizens all the time... I hear from our cities' senior citizens all the time just how difficult it is for them to remain in the city and still make ends meet. Unfortunately, the number of grandparents who serve as the primary caretakers for their grandchildren continues to grow. Here in Philadelphia and across the nation, there are numerous societal issues that are behind this: growing trend, joblessness, poverty, addiction, mental illness, and much more. The parents often have no choice but to place their children in the care of the children's grandparents, many of whom are on fixed income. The grandparents' child tax credit I am proposing would provide an annual tax credit of 80% of the grandparents' annual real estate taxes with a maximum credit of $3,800 per year. Any unused real estate tax credit in any given year could be carried over to the next year. Only one grandparent could claim the grandchild or grandchildren or as dependents in any given tax year. Grandparents would apply for the grandparent-child care tax credit by completing a form by the City Department of Revenue. The second ordinance I'm introducing today is called the Working Grandparent Tax Credit, and it would provide an annual real estate tax credit for any grandparent who can reasonably demonstrate that they are the primary caretaker for their biological or legal grandchildren's well-being and is also still in the workforce. This ordinance is in response to the growing number of grandparents who must continue to work beyond and must consider to be in retirement age in order to make ends meet, and who also serve as the primary caretaker for their children. Grandparents who qualify for the grandparents' child tax credit and the working grandparent tax credit may apply for both but can only receive the maximum real estate tax credit of $3,800. The third ordinance I'm introducing today is intended to give working parents who have to place their child or children in daycare a break on their real estate taxes. The parent-child care real estate tax credit, like the grandparent tax credit ordinance previously discussed, would provide an annual tax credit equal to 80% of the parent's annual real estate taxes with a maximum credit of $3,800. The fourth and final ordinance I'm introducing today is the parent-child care wage tax credit designed to help families who are working, parents who have children in daycare and childcare. This ordinance would provide an annual tax credit equal to 80% of the parent's annual city wage tax with a maximum credit of $3,800 per tax year. Many Philadelphians who have no choice but to have both the father and mother working in order to make ends meet, those who are young and often have no choice but to place their children in daycare, would and can experience this proposition. They too deserve a break on their taxes. These four ordinances address financial inequalities that adversely impact our seniors and working families. I respectfully request the support of my colleagues on these important issues and would provide much-needed tax relief for these people. Thank you very much, and in closing, children are priceless.
Thank you, Councilmen. The Taubner tax credit package will be referred to the appropriate committee.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neal.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privileged resolution honoring and congratulating Mary Frances Fogg on the occasion of her retirement following more than 32 years of loyal and dedicated service to the City of Philadelphia and its citizens.
Thank you. That will be on today's calendar. I'm sorry.
I just, I should have mentioned that that resolution for Mary was cosponsored by all members of council.
Thank you. Shall be reflected in the record, Councilman. Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Squill.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one bill.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning to revise certain provisions of subsection 14, 507 entitled CDO Central Delaware River Front Overlay District, to revise certain provisions of subsection 14, 702 entitled Floor Area Height and Housing Unit Density Bonuses, and to make related changes.
That will be referred to the appropriate committee. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I offer one non-privileged resolution on your behalf, cosponsored by Councilman David O, and I wish to be recognized after the title of the resolution is read. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A non-privileged resolution also naming Broad Street from Lenox Avenue to West Van Angell Street and Broad Street from West Oxford Street to Master Street as Reverend Dr. Leon H. Sullivan Way to honor the ministry of Reverend Dr. Leon H. Sullivan and his tremendous impact on the City of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President, for offering this resolution and for something that really is long overdue for the lion of Zion, the founder of OIC, the founder of Progress Plaza, and a civil rights fighter for all of Philadelphia. I want to move that the rules of council be suspended to permit for consideration of this resolution on today's final passage calendar.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. This will be on today's final passage calendar. Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much. I have no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman. Our next order of business is report from committees, and the chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee for a report from the Committee on Rules.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Rules reports 10 bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee on Rules, which is referred Bill Number 190506 entitled, An Ordinance Amending Section 14, 303 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Common Procedures and Requirements by Allowing Certain Letters Submitted to the Zoning Board to Serve as an Entry of Appearance, and Bill Number 190551 entitled, An Ordinance Amending the Philadelphia Zoning Maps by Changing the Zoning Designations of Certain Areas of Land Located Within an Area Bound by Bering Street, Saunders Avenue, Powelton Avenue, 38th Street, Filbert Street, Sloan Street, Powelton Avenue, and 39th Street, and Bill Number 190601 entitled, An Ordinance Amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning to Revise Certain Provisions of Chapter 14, 200 entitled Definitions, and Chapter 14, 600 entitled Use Regulations by Creating the Use Category "Smoking Lounge," and Bill Number 190611 entitled, An Ordinance Amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning to Revise Certain Provisions of Chapter 14, 800 entitled Parking and Loading by Amending Parking Standards for Historically Designated Properties, and Bill Number 190612 entitled, An Ordinance Amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning to Revise Certain Provisions of Chapter 14, 600 entitled Use Regulations by Amending Standards for Excessory Dwelling Units, and Bill Number 190613 entitled, An Ordinance Amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning to Revise Certain Provisions of Chapter 14, 600 entitled Use Regulations by Amending Use Standards for Historically Designated Properties, and Bill Number 190655 entitled, An Ordinance Amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code to Revise Certain Provisions of Chapter 14, 502 entitled CTR Center City Overlay District by Amending the Supplemental Use Controls for the Old City Residential Area, and Bill Number 190659 entitled, An Ordinance Establishing a Neighborhood Improvement District to be known as the Fishtown Kensington Area Business Improvement District in an area that generally includes both sides of Frankfurt Avenue from the west side of Delaware Avenue to the southwest side of Lehigh Avenue, both sides of North Front Street from the north side of Poplar Street to the south side of Montgomery Street, both sides of East Girard Avenue from Frankfurt Avenue continuing to the west side of East Fletcher Street, the north side of West Girard Avenue from Frankfurt Avenue to Front Street, and the south side of West Girard Avenue from Frankfurt Avenue to Howard Street, and certain blocks of streets that intersect portions of these streets, designating the Fishtown Kensington Area Business Improvement District Incorporated, which has organized itself as a Pennsylvania nonprofit corporation, as the Neighborhood Improvement District Management Association for the district, approving a plan concerning the district, authorizing the Director of Commerce on behalf of the city to execute an agreement with the Fishtown Kensington Area Business Improvement District Incorporated relating to the district, and authorizing the Fishtown Kensington Area Business Improvement District Incorporated to assess property owners within the district a special property assessment fee to be used in accordance with the approved plan, all in accordance with the provision of the Community and Economic Improvement Act, and Bill Number 190660 entitled, An Ordinance Establishing a Neighborhood Improvement District to be known as the South Philly Market District in an area that generally includes both sides of South 9th Street from the south side of Fritzwater Street to the north side of Federal Street, both sides of Christian Street from west side of South 7th Street to east side of South 10th Street, both sides of Monroe Street from South 8th Street to South 10th Street, both sides of Carpenter Street from South 8th Street to South 10th Street, both sides of Washington Avenue from west side of South 8th Street to east side of South 11th Street, both sides of Ellsworth Street from East Passianke Avenue to South 10th Street, both sides of East Passianke Avenue from the south side of Washington Avenue to the north side of Federal Street, both sides of South 10th Street from the south side of Christian Street to the north side of Ellsworth Street, both sides of South 8th Street between the south side of Christian Street and the north side of Carpenter Street, and between the south side of Washington Avenue and the north side of Ellsworth Street, the west side of South 8th Street between the south side of Carpenter Street and the north side of Washington Avenue, and certain blocks of streets that intersect portions of these streets, designating the South Philly Market District Incorporated, which has organized itself as a Pennsylvania nonprofit corporation, as the Neighborhood Improvement District Management Association for the district, approving a plan for the district, including a list of proposed improvements and their estimated cost, and providing for assessment fees to be levied on property owners within the district, authorizing the Director of Commerce on behalf of the city to execute an agreement with South Philly Market District Incorporated relating to the district, and authorizing the South Philly Market District Incorporated to assess property owners within the district, a special property assessment fee to be used in accordance with the approved plan, all in accordance with the provision of the Community and Economic Improvement Act, and Bill Number 190711 entitled, An Ordinance Amending the Philadelphia Zoning Maps by Changing the Zoning Designations of Certain Areas of Land Located Within an Area Bound by Broad Street, Oregon Avenue, 10th Street, and the Schuylkill Expressway, I-76. Respectfully reports it as considered the same, and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Chair again recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended, so it's permit for its reading this day of the 10 bills that were just read into the record by Mr. Decker.
Make it a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and properly second that the rules of council be suspended, so it's permit first reading the days of the 10 bills just read into the record by the chief clerk. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. These bills will be placed on our first reading calendar today. Our next order of business is the consideration of the calendar. I note that the bills just reported from committee with the suspension of the rules have been deemed to have had a first reading. These bills will be placed on our second reading and final passage calendar at our next session of council. If there are no additional bills on our first reading calendar, the chair recognizes Councilman Heenan for the purpose of calling on bills and resolution on the final passage calendar today.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following resolutions and bills are being called up for second reading and final passage calendars today. There are Bill Numbers 170408, 190723, 190779, 19070, 180729, 190606, 190707, 190712, 190562, 190658, 190509, and 190706. All other bills and resolutions are being held.
Thank you, Councilmen. Prior to us proceeding with our consideration of bills and resolutions, we'll have our public comment session. We'll go as follows. If you have an interest in testifying on a bill or resolution that is on our final passage calendar today, if you have not already done so, I'd ask that you sign up at the table to my left. When your name is called, you will go to the middle of the council chambers to the podium. There's a device on that podium. When the light turns green on that device, it will be your time to speak. When the light turns yellow, you will have 30 seconds to conclude your remarks. When the light turns red, we'd ask that you please adhere to our guidelines and conclude your remarks. You will be given three minutes to testify for a bill or resolution that is on the final passage calendar today. Mr. Decker, please call the first name.
Isabel Guavera.
Hi, I'm here to talk with the case of 170408. Hi, my name is Hazel Guavara. I'm a current student in Alani Chartered High School. I have been in Alani since ninth grade. Now I'm in 11th grade. Let me tell you all what Alani is. Alani is a school that gives many opportunities, and it helps not just its students, but its community as well. Our school has bad and good things, just like any school does, but it's nothing that can not be solved. I've been in Alani for three years now, and I personally think that Alani is a good school. That had helped many kids, not just academically, but also it had helped them grow as individuals. In Alani, what stands out the most is the staff, the teachers, the security guards, everyone. Every teacher in Alani lives a mark on their students. They are always there to help in any situation. If they can't help, they will do it no matter what, and that's very important to have in each school. They all commit with their work and care about their students' education, which is very important as well. They inspire students to achieve their dreams and to never give up on them. They are very supportive, which for me is very important to have, someone that supports you and that believes in you. Some students sometimes don't have that at home, and it's great that in our school they can find that. Alani shows us that we are not alone, and that everyone in the school is there for us. Alani has great programs that can help students in many ways. For example, we have College X's. College X's help students that want to attend college. It helps them find the best one for them. Also, College X's help students get scholarships. With this program, students have left Alani with an almost full scholarship. With this program, students have found the best college for them. Also, we have peer mediation. Peer mediation is where students help other students solve problems between them. Peer mediation have helped many students, and not just students, but teachers as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, our next speaker, please.
Joe Dennehall, commenting on 190723, 190712, 190707, and 190606.
Good afternoon. This is the official decree of the people. And as such requires immediate action and remedy. Every week, council, mayor, governor, and others transfer private property to the government, probably unlawfully. I respect public servants that obey their oath, constitution, and laws. Constituents do not require their public servants to kneel and blow smoke up the people's butt. To abolish the monumental corruption that exists, public servants must first get up off their knees and take steps to enforce and prosecute existing constitutions and laws instead of unlawfully restricting public testimony at public meetings. The constitutions require immediate remedy of this breach of law, breach of laws, breach of fiduciary duty. Your oath of office requires you to act or face prison. 42 U.S.C., 1982, 1983, 1985, 1986, 1987, 18 U.S.C., 241, 242, 2381, 2384, P.A. Constitution, Article 1, Sections 1 through 28, 26 P.A., CSA, 703, 705, 708, 709, 711, 712, 713, 716, 902, and other laws listed in SCOTUS 158965, 141330, 144056 appear violating. I call on the federal and Commonwealth governments to perform their constitutional obligations to investigate and prosecute all involved in the theft and illegal deed transfer of my home, 1038 West Wyoming Avenue. The denial of God-given 42 U.S.C. 1982 property rights for 25 years is egregious, extraordinary, and violating, and requires immediate remedy. A just government must obey the rule of law. This color law government must have its charter to govern revoked until a constitutionally compliant government is installed. Public servants cannot refuse their sworn duty to act, any more than a fireman can refuse to fight a fire. The sovereign people require oath, constitutional laws be enforced, and jail is required for all who violate oath, constitutional law. I remind council, it takes a lot of -- I remind council, it takes a lot of cooperation to create and allow this monumental corruption.
Commenting on 190640.
Hi, my name is Lynn. Whoa. Okay. Hi, my name is Lynn Landis of SafeStreetsPhilly.org. I'm here to support Bill 190640. Just as we have four-way stop signs to enhance pedestrian safety, we also have Title X to deter prohibited conduct. My husband and I were walking to the Reading Terminal Market last week when we came across a woman in her sixties, sitting like a two-year-old on a busy sidewalk at the corner of 12th and Market Streets. A homeless outreach team was talking to her, but she refused their offer of assistance, so they walked away. We approached the team and asked if they were simply going to leave her there in the middle of the sidewalk, and they said yes, that it was her constitutional right to be there. Actually, it isn't. No court anywhere has ruled that people have the unfettered right to sit on the sidewalk, sleep on the street, or panhandle. All of these activities are conditional and can be regulated, and are regulated locally under Philadelphia Code Title X. That said, for the most part, these laws are not being enforced. It should be noted that recent federal court decisions supporting panhandling as free speech have not been challenged to the Supreme Court, which could take a much different view of the matter. Most of the time, the homeless and panhandlers will leave an area willingly, but more and more often they will not. They are blatantly ignoring the police and refusing offers of assistance from homeless outreach teams. This cannot continue. The homeless outreach teams and police cannot continue to walk away, leaving these people on the street in violation of federal, state, and local laws governing health, safety, and sanitation. The foundation of any civilized society contains some semblance of law and order. That foundation cracks when citizens and enforcement officials alike ignore laws and regulations designed to protect us all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, our next speaker, please.
Commenting on 180669.
Good morning. Good morning, City Council. I'm here to speak about Resolution 180409 about the unethical banking practices of Wells Fargo. I was here last week making a similar argument. If you are very concerned about unethical banking practices, financial literacy needs to be your number-one priority. I'm going to link again to the closing, suggested closing of Alany Charter High School. We have one of the most, excuse me, the most innovative financial literacy program in the country, as listed by Market Watch. Even one of the presidential candidates for president, who was on the debate stage yesterday, or excuse me, two days ago, called us to get advice about how to copy that. If our school is not renewed, you are closing a light on so many innovative programs. Take a look at our debate team. We are number two in the city. Do you know what it's like when the school board of Philadelphia recommends us for closing, and we are able to go in there and say, "Oh, we're going against Central High. Don't worry about them. They're easy. The coach writes all their arguments. You'll be fine." And it's true, and we take second place. A week ago, I was here because a committee meeting was getting ready for the board meeting that is occurring tonight, where they are likely going to recommend us not for renewal. Whatever you can, City Council, in the next few hours, can you please not let this happen? We are not asking for indefinite life. We are not asking that we exist forever. Give us five years, or whatever the normal grace period is, in order for the next renewal hearing, in order to make the argument. We are a minority-led charter school. Even the school district of Philadelphia released a report on March 29th, 2019, where they disproportionately closed schools that are led by minority-led charter school executives. This is so important because the students, the community, and our teachers love this school. In five years, we, please put the pressure on us to be able to negotiate a fair agreement with our union, be able to make the students college and career-ready, and to make sure that we continue to reach academic levels that are similar, if not better, to the rest of the school in the city. If you can, whatever you can do, before the meeting tonight, please look into this issue. If you allow our school to continue and speak with the school board, you will remove this monkey off of our shoulders. For the last several years, they have been recommending closing, and it's taken so much time and energy away from students and teachers and parents and administrators. If you give us the normal period in order for the next renewal, we will be able to truly prove to the city that we deserve to have our doors open. I do not think that this is an unreasonable expectation, given the amount of innovation that we have had in the city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony.
Dermot Doolud-Dix. Commenting on 190712.
Good morning. My name's Dermot Doolud-Dix. I'm with Unite Here Local 274. I'm here to testify in opposition to Bill number 190712. Bill number 190712 states that the city of Philadelphia is, quote, "hereby authorized to convey to the Philadelphia Industrial Development Corporation" some or all of the parcels of land located in and about the area bounded by Lombard Street, South Broad Street, South Street, and Fifteenth Street. The site is currently a city health center at the corner of Broad and Lombard. According to an article in the Philadelphia Inquirer, this would give a developer, the Goldenberg Group, quote, "near control of a full city block in one of Philadelphia's most active real estate markets." The nonprofit Philadelphia Industrial Development Corporation is handling the property sale on the city's behalf. The deal was announced less than a month ago and may be authorized today. I reached out to all three RCOs which cover this area, and I'm not aware of any public meetings having taken place since the Goldenberg Group was announced as the winning bidder by PIDC a few weeks ago. Unite Here Local 274 is opposed to the bill as written. The Philadelphia Industrial Development Corporation should not be an intermediary for the sale of public land to a private developer. PIDC is a nonprofit corporation governed by the trustees appointed by the city of Philadelphia and the Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber of Commerce has greater control over the composition of the board of PIDC than the city, effectively giving private interests an upper hand in matters of public policy. It would be best if the city, rather than a corporation which is not accountable to the public interest, retained control of the parcels mentioned in Bill number 190712 until the sale to the developer is ready to occur, rather than conveying the land to PIDC for what is reportedly expected to be a period of a year or more. Although many claim that PIDC is best prepared to handle such transactions, the sale of the city-owned Family Court Building at 1801 Vine was approved by council in 2014, and the promised development has yet to occur despite PIDC's involvement in the development process. We urge council to vote no on Bill 190712. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Madeline Chacomba. Commenting on 190712.
Okay.
Good afternoon.
Can you hear me? All right, my name is Madeline Chacomba, president of the North of Washington Avenue Coalition. I'm here to oppose Bill 190712. This bill is a travesty. It is a backdoor of selling valuable city property to a developer for pittance. I was unaware of this, because I thought this was simply a transaction from one city department to another, only to find out that the Philadelphia industrial authority for industrial development is nothing but a shell company, and that they were going to transfer the bill, the property, to PIDC, which is nothing but a nonprofit, who in turn has already gotten bids to sell this land for fifteen million dollars. This is a drop in the bucket. Fifteen million dollars to a developer who plans to put condos, multimillion-dollar condos on this land. And then who's, are we going to get any money from it? No, fifteen million dollars and lose billions of dollars in taxes because you refuse to pass the tax baitment bill, which is 180750 that you keep holding up in committee. So we're going to lose millions of dollars because we're not going to collect any taxes on this property. Please do not let this go. I'm asking Councilman Johnson, because I don't know if he's aware of this or not, but I don't think he is, and I like to think that he isn't aware of it, that he should not let this bill be passed. I'm asking all of you not to pass this bill. You're sinking the city of Philadelphia without any money, okay? Our schools, our infrastructure, and city properties are suffering because you are taking pittance for nothing. This building, this property is worth at least a hundred and fifty million dollars if you develop it yourself. It's worth that amount of money. Please don't give it away, okay? Our intent, the sale, like I said, will lose the city billions of dollars in future taxes, and I mean billions. Please don't give it to this developer, okay? I am really upset. I can't tell you how much upset I am about this. Please, I ask the city council members, don't vote for this bill. You've given away our property, fifteen million dollars, for somebody who can build multimillion dollars on it. Please don't do this. I ask you to vote against this. Fifteen million dollars is not going to last this city one day. You go through that money like that. Please, I beg you, do not sell this land to the developer. It's the Goldenberg Group that's buying this land. They already own half the block already, in which the land is at, and we're giving away our, oh. A, I'm so upset. We cannot do this. Please, please don't do this. We need a health thing, and we don't even have that. We have one health center left in Philadelphia, in South Philadelphia, that's going to carry two-hundred thousand people. Please, don't do that.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
Commenting on 190779.
Good afternoon.
I want to say, I'd be one of, thanks for letting me say something. I'm a mother, and I'm not advocate, just trying to be a voice for the children who are lost in the system through the DHS system. I have got children, other friends who say they don't have DHS. I'm asking the city council and those in authority to help reunite all the children lost in the system, newly separated, put in justice or the courts. I had to say that. And I'm asking, could they make low-income housing for the children in DHS and try to get, reunite them? And also, I'm nervous. Make sure they investigate foster care, not just foster care, all the children in the city. I'm nervous. Investigate foster care and reunite families, like that's all I got to say then. Thanks.
Thanks for your testimony.
Joe Cox. Commenting on 160720 and 180729.
Good afternoon.
Thank you. Good afternoon. 180729, yes, we should discourage littering, but where are the resources? Are we making it easier for everyday people and workers? Currently, we are piloting a street cleaning program which creates more pollution. It's a problem that I will bike miles as a bike messenger and a commuter and see a handful of no-litter signs, but no trash cans or recycling bins. We will find you, but we will provide residents with trash cans or recycling bins. 160720, I spoke about this before. I shared it on my platforms, and so many people were concerned and shocked to hear about this bill. This is a problem that seems to happen a lot. Constituents not knowing what bills are being pushed, that seems to be on purpose, by the language that is used in bills and by having inaccessible public meetings. I am worried about the bill 160720 will have on the most vulnerable citizens and the working class. With so many food deserts and the highest population of disabled citizens, and being the poorest big city, I'm confused as to why we would make a bill to get rid of grocery stores. For many city residents, the corner store is their source of food and other essentials. What this bill seems to do, either directly or indirectly, is to create more food deserts in our underserved communities by restricting access to family-owned establishments. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
There are no other speakers on the public comment list, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson. We good? Thank you, sir. We now consider the bills and resolutions on our second reading and final passage calendar. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 170408.
A resolution calling on and urging the school district of Philadelphia to permanently prohibit the suspension of elementary-age students from the first through fifth grades.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that Resolution Number 170408 be withdrawn.
Thank you. It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. 170408 is withdrawn. Mr. Decker, 190723.
A resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia redevelopment authority without consideration of deeds conveying conditional fees simple title to certain city-owned lots or pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements thereon situated in the Forty-seventh Ward of the city of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution 190723 is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 190779.
A resolution authorizing the establishment of a special committee on child separation in Philadelphia to investigate child separation in Philadelphia's child welfare system and develop recommendations to ensure compliance with state child protective services law to protect children and due process rights of families and prevent the unnecessary breakup of families.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you much, Council President. I move that the Resolution Number 190779 be withdrawn.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. 190779 is withdrawn. Mr. Decker, 190, I'm sorry, 190779, 190790.
A resolution also naming Segal Street between Twenty-first and Twenty-second Streets Vendetta Grimes Way to honor the life and legacy of Vendetta Grimes.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I would like to move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. 190790 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 180729.
An ordinance amending Section 10710 entitled Dumping of Debris and Short Dumping by adding new provisions and amending Section 10719 entitled penalties by further amending the maximum penalty to be assessed.
Yeah. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer an amendment to Bill Number 180729. Copy of amendment has been distributed to all members of council, and I move the adoption of the amendment.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Bill Number 180729 has been amended and will be placed on our second reading and final passage calendar at our next session of council. Mr. Decker, 190606.
An ordinance amending Title 16 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Public Property by amending Chapter 16, 400, entitled Vacant and Surplus Properties, Chapter 16, 500, entitled Councilmatic District Development Program, and Chapter 16, 700, entitled Philadelphia Land Bank. In order to--
Chair-- All right, I could have sworn. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kiana Sanchez.
I'm sorry. I move for its adoption.
No, no, we--
Oh, my, motion to amend, sorry.
Okay.
Thank you, Council President. I offer an amendment to your bill, 190606. As the copy of amendment has been properly circulated to all members of city council, I move for its adoption.
You get a second? Second. It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. 190606 has been amended and will be placed on our second reading and final passage calendar at our next session of council. Mr. Decker, 190707.
An ordinance authorizing the commissioner of public property to acquire fee simple title or lesser real estate interest to all or a portion of a parcel or parcels of land, together with the improvements thereon in and about the area bounded by West Cumberland Street, North East Street, West York Street, and North Ninth Street.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Dom. Councilman Green. Councilman Greenlee. Councilwoman Gimm. Councilman Heenan. Councilman Johnson. Councilman Jones. Councilman O'Neil. Councilman O. Councilwoman Parker. Councilwoman Kiana Sanchez.
What are you all talking about over there?
Councilman Taubner. Council President Clark.
Aye, the ayes are seventeen and the ayes are zero. Majority of members present, voting in affirms that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 190712.
An ordinance authorizing the commissioner of public property to convey to the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development all or a portion of a parcel or parcels of land in and about the area bounded by Lombard Street, South Broad Street, South Street, in and about the area bounded by Lombard Street, South Broad Street, South Street, and Fifteenth Street for further conveyance.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell.
Aye.
Councilman Dom.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Greenlee.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm.
Aye.
Councilman Heenan.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neal.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kiwanis Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilman Taubenberger, Council President Clark.
Aye, the ayes are seventeen and ayes are zero. Majority of members present, voting in affirmative that the bill passes. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Yeah, thank you, Council President. I probably should have gave my brief remarks regarding, um, Bill Number 190712 prior to the vote, but I do thank all my colleagues for the support of it. Two aspects I just wanted to address just for the record. First aspect is, um, the current health center, which have been underutilized over the last several years, it just became a warehouse for different, different city agencies over the past few years, will be replaced by economic development project regarding student housing and also commercial, um, development along their corridor at Broad and, um, South Street. The developer is also engaged in a ownership minority joint venture partnership with an African-American developer, which is, um, normally, um, not the case when these types of projects come forward. Also, there's a ten percent set aside for, um, African-American and minority businesses to house their businesses at this particular location, which is not normally the case when these development projects come forward. And also, we have an aggressive, um, EOP plan, um, to make sure that the minority development and participation on the actual building, um, of the actual, um, facility. And two subway stops down from this health center, um, is a new, brand-new health center called Health Center One at Broad and Marage Street. Um, it's a health center slash recreation center slash library. So in the event that there's a world catastrophe, um, in the second Council Magic District, people can go there for shelter. Just wanted to, um, address some, some issues and concerns. Um, there's some individuals brought to my attention. And also regarding, um, the land disposition process, um, you have appointed me to, um, PIDC Board, and so we work very closely with the board members as well as the executive director, um, John Grady, again, focusing on issues of minority participation and inclusion. And so, um, any issues that, um, any organizing organizations may have, we will address them as we go through, um, this process. And so I just wanted to thank everyone for their vote, but I wanted to also state for the record, um, the process, um, that has taken place to get us to this point. So thank you very much, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Decker, 190562.
An ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grays on a portion of City Plan Number 242 by striking from the city plan and vacating a portion of the bed of Old York Road on the southeastern side thereof from a point approximately fifty-five feet southwest of Sixty-sixth Avenue to a point approximately two-hundred-eighty-four feet further southwest really therefrom, thereby reducing the width of Old York Road within this area.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell.
Aye.
Councilman Dom.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Greenlee.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm.
Aye.
Councilman Heenan.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neal.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kiwanis Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla.
Aye.
Councilman Taubenberger.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye, the ayes are seventeen and ayes are zero. Majority of members present, voting in affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 190658.
An ordinance authorizing South Street Head House District care of Michael Harris to construct, own, and maintain proposed various encroachments in the public right-of-way along the five-hundred block of South Second Street, Median Island, at Head House Square Plaza.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell.
Aye.
Councilman Dom.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Greenlee.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm.
Aye.
Councilman Heenan.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neal.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kiwanis Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Aye.
Councilman Squilla.
Aye.
Councilman Taubenberger.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye, the ayes are seventeen and ayes are zero. Majority of members present, voting in affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 190509.
An ordinance amending Chapter 19, 200 of the Philadelphia Code entitled City Funds, Deposits, Investments, and Disbursements by revising the list of seated depositories.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell.
Aye.
Councilman Dom.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Greenlee.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm.
Aye.
Councilman Heenan.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neal.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kiwanis Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Aye.
Councilman Squilla.
Aye.
Councilman Taubenberger.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye, the ayes are seventeen and ayes are zero. Majority of members present, voting in affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 190706.
An ordinance authorizing the issuance from time to time of one or more series of general obligation bonds to provide funds to refund certain outstanding general obligation bonds of the City of Philadelphia, authorizing the mayor, city controller, and city solicitor or a majority of them to sell bonds at public or private negotiated sale, setting forth the purposes for which the bonds of the proceeds will be expended, providing for the maturities and for other terms and conditions and for the form of the bonds, providing that the bonds may be redeemable prior to maturity, providing sinking funds for the bonds and for appropriations to the sinking fund commission for the payment thereof, authorizing agreements to provide credit enhancement or payment or liquidity sources for the bonds and certain other actions.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell.
Aye.
Councilman Dom.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Greenlee.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm.
Aye.
Councilman Heenan.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neal.
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kiwanis Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Aye.
Councilman Squilla.
Aye.
Councilman Taubenberger.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye, the ayes are seventeen and ayes are zero. Majority of members present, voting in affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, you have any additional resolution?
A resolution celebrating October as National High School Dropout Prevention Month and recognizing the launch of Project U-Turn social media campaign introduced by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing Donovan Sterling West on the occasion of his appointment as president of the African-American Chamber of Commerce of Pennsylvania, New Jersey, and Delaware, introduced by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring Department of Parks and Recreation employee Janine Helms for her heroic actions during the mass shooting at Baker Playground on July thirteen, two thousand nineteen, introduced by Councilman Jones.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you. Move for the adoption.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing the extraordinary contributions of the Independence Blue Cross Foundation and its president, Lorena Marshall Blake, introduced by Councilwoman Kiwanis Sanchez.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kiwanis Sanchez.
Thank you. I move for its adoption.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing the American Jewish Committee's hashtag Show Up for Shabbat movement in remembrance of the first anniversary of the massacre at the Tree of Life synagogue in Pittsburgh, and calling on all Philadelphians to raise their voices for a world free of antisemitism, bigotry, and hate, introduced by Councilman Dom.
Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President. Move for the adoption.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and congratulating Mary Frances Fogg on the occasion of her retirement following more than thirty-two years of loyal and dedicated service to the City of Philadelphia and its citizens, introduced by Councilman O'Neal.
Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neal. It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution. And a resolution also naming Broad Street from Lenox Avenue to West Vanango Street and Broad Street from West Oxford Street to Master Street as Reverend Dr. Leon H. Sullivan Way, to honor the ministry of Reverend Dr. Leon H. Sullivan and his tremendous impact on the City of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilwoman Bass on behalf of Council President Clark.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
Been moved and probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. Speeches on behalf of the minority, and speeches on behalf of the majority, chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. This summer, I had a couple of my interns write letters to Congressman Elijah Cummings while he was under the, the cloud of, uh, the President Trump. Today, we mourn a great man, fearless leader, a titan for civil rights Congressman Elijah Cummings. He believed, as I do, that diversity should never be viewed as a problem, but instead should be viewed as a promise. And so I thought it appropriate, given, uh, his wonderful history and his life story, that we should, um, acknowledge the important work he's done and the, his courage for all the work he's done on behalf of people of color and those who want to do the right thing. This past June, he spoke at the John Hopkins University graduation, and I want to close out by quoting his remarks whereby he said, and I quote, "You must be agents of change for you have been blessed with an awesome education. You are the ones that can guide us the rest of the way. I've often said that our children are the living messengers we send to a future we will never see," end quote. Thank you, Council President.